You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is the May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Michigan City Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May twenty first Michigan City City Council Meeting. This evening, before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer, I just want to send out condolences to some council members that have been greeted by deaths in the family. Number one was Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Her mother passed away, I believe it's possibly a week ago. Yeah, and so we send condolences to her. Councilman Brian Dabney's unfortunate incident had a brother and sister-in-law pass away the other day. And myself, I had my oldest brother. He passed away about a week ago. So when you stand for your moment of silence, keep them in your prayers. So we'll stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America's stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and eternal.
Ms. Nyelab on the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Coulter.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Molenhour.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Preszwalinski.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman. We have eight present and one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nyelab. Approval of the minutes from the May eighth meeting. Is there a motion and a second or approval?
My second.
Motion to approve by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilwoman Molenhour. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees? Having none? Finance Committee meeting.
Mr. President.
Councilman Cora.
We did not have any claims, but I'll read the balances in the funds. Yeah, twenty to thirty five Riverboat Fund. The balance is four million, hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and six dollars, fourteen cents. And Fund number twenty to thirty-six Rainy Day Fund. The balance is three million, nine hundred and twenty-two, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-five cents for a total of eight million, sixty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars, forty-nine cents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. See. There's no claims, there's zero claims, so I don't think we ever take a vote on approving any claims payment. Yeah. Reports from boards and commissions? Any reports from boards or commissions tonight? Reports of special or, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman Molenhour.
That's okay. This evening, the Michigan City Commission is actually reading a statement at the LaPorte County Board of Zoning Appeals recommending that solar panel array, solar panel arrays be allowed to be installed throughout the county without restriction. And that's because the county already has a very strong ordinance regarding the installation of solar panels. So Representative Pat Boy is actually reading that statement for the commission this evening.
Hey, thank you. Any other reports from boards or commissions? Councilman Cora, is your light just on?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Aye. Any reports of special or select committees? Any reports of special or select committees? Reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments? And this evening, we have Police Chief Marty Corley giving us the two thousand and twenty-three crime report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President and Council, for having me. What I will do, I'll be going over our two thousand and twenty-three annual report for the Michigan City Police Department, which will entail things that we've been doing, that we've done in two thousand and twenty-three, and also will give the crime report. I did give each council person a detailed crime report. I'm not going to go over each number in the PowerPoint, but you do have the detailed numbers for that. Also, if the public does do want a copy, I can get them a copy without a FOIA request. But I do have, they will be available either at the records department, or I can send them out to you via email. So starting off with our crime statistic comparisons from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. As you can see, cost of service for twenty twenty-three are thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-three. They're up by six point one percent. Our case reports completed are at fifty-three hundred and fifteen. They are down by seventeen point five percent. And that's just due to just people, just a different type of reports, not so many reports were taken as they were last year. There's sometimes that we go to calls where reports aren't taken. We do generate a case, a report number for every report, but sometimes it's just notes that just dotted down that don't require actual case, so that kind of contributes to that number. Arrests made for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-three hundred and ninety, they're up by three point five percent compared to twenty-three twelve in two thousand and twenty-two. Accidents, thirteen hundred and eighty, down by nine point five percent compared to fifteen hundred last year. Traffic stops, sixty-one hundred and nine, they're up by nineteen percent. Shots fired calls are up by four point seven percent. That contributes to our newest technology and a little bit more of alerts getting, and also the AI kind of learning itself. And so sometimes we are getting some false alerts too. Fire RCs, firearm C's compare to two thousand and twenty-two, one hundred and forty-five in two thousand and twenty-two, one hundred and fifty-eight, we're up by eight, two point, eight point two percent. Community policing calls for service, thirty-eight hundred and eighteen in two thousand and twenty-two, forty-eight hundred and twenty-five in two thousand and twenty-three, up by twenty point nine percent. And our Flock usage, not available two thousand and twenty-three because, I mean, I'm sorry, for two thousand and twenty-two, because we just got the technology two thousand and twenty-three. But as far as investigations leading to arrests, we had seventeen total Flock hits or Flock use seventeen, seventy-two different times that led to some type of arrest. Also, not in that number, there's another twenty-five to thirty times where Flock was used just to lead up to an investigation that sometime may not lead to arrests at the present time, but has continued investigation, so. Next. Well, as you can see, our cost of service, again, they are up by twenty-two hundred, twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-five compared to two thousand and twenty-two. Our service, cost of service average per month for the year of two thousand and twenty-three is three thousand, one hundred and eighty, which is up one hundred and eighty-three more calls per month. Next. Community service, community policing cost of service, wanted to highlight that a little bit more. As you can see, in two thousand and twenty-two, we were at thirty-eight hundred and eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three, forty-eight, twenty-five. And at the halfway mark of, just about the halfway mark of two thousand and twenty-four, we are almost at half or almost over half of what we did in two thousand and twenty-two. We're almost at two thousand, two thousand calls for service when it comes to community policing. Community policing entails of us getting out, you know, checking businesses, talking to people, just in a proactive type of way without any certain call for service where it deals with some type of crime, but it's just being available and being seen. Before I go into that, I just want to also contribute some of our numbers. So our overall violent crime investigations are increased by nine point four percent with active investigations that were, we investigated due to violent crimes. But our arrests also increased by forty-seven point three percent in those numbers that you see. Overall, reported firearm offenses were up thirty-four point four percent, and our arrests were up fifty-four percent. And again, when I talk about these offenses, these are actually reports that we taken for those crimes. Overall drug offense investigations are up eight percent, but our overall drug offense arrests are up eleven percent. And overall crimes reported against persons are down twelve point five percent, but our arrests are up five percent. And overall reported crimes against property are down twenty-two percent, but our arrests for those crimes are up sixteen percent, and those will be highlighted in the actual report, the crime report that is available to the public also. A lot of those numbers that you see are contributing to, for us getting more arrests and crime being, those reports of being down and up, contribute to our personnel numbers rising. You know, in two thousand and twenty-three, we had an upscale of people that we hired and were able to be a little bit more visible and get a little bit more involved in some deeper investigations. Also, our shots fired calls are up due to detection and tweaking of our Flock system. And firearm C's are up due to some specialized units of patrol, which I talked about more in the report. Next, on to our LaPorte County Drug Task Force. It's comprised of Michigan City, DEA, Indiana State Police, LaPorte City, LaPorte County Sheriff's Department, ATF. And we are a HIDA designated, so HIDA also contributes money to our drug task force. So we are combined county drug task force, which is how the Michigan City Police Department. Our members consist of those agencies that I just pointed out, and they work between, throughout the whole county with those, what they're, what they do. Next. As you can see, in two thousand and twenty-two, there's two hundred and fifty-two controlled narcotics purchases, and two thousand and twenty-three, there's twenty-two hundred and sixty-six. That number's up fourteen guns seized, and these are guns separate from what I give you in the gun total that you saw earlier. The gun total that you saw earlier was just on our patrol shift, doesn't have nothing to do with our drug unit, who also within their investigations, not only do you see drugs, also guns also doing those investigations. So as you can see, they're up by eleven, thirty-six in two thousand and twenty-two compared to forty-seven this year or two thousand and twenty-three. Arrests made, one hundred and twenty-four in ninety-six, in two thousand and twenty-three is only ninety-six, down twenty-eight. Not saying that they're not doing more work, but the investigations are a little bit more intense. So they're not doing maybe as many high-volume calls of as far as investigations, but they net a little bit more, they have the toll that they take, where they're now not just going locally, just dismantling drug trafficking organizations that go statewide throughout the country. Pending charges, seventy-five until two thousand and twenty-two, ninety-two in two thousand and twenty-three, so that's up seventeen. Means those charges pending, and also through those charges, investigations are continuing also. Overdose, overdose death investigations were twenty-six in two thousand and twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three, they're at twenty-two. They were down four. Next, future apprehension street team is our warrants team, which consists of LaPorte County Sheriff's Office, Michigan City Police Department, US Marshal Service, and LaPorte County Police Department, or just know LaPorte Police Department. Next. As you can see, those numbers, total arrests, two thousand and twenty-two, five hundred and seventy, and two thousand and twenty-three, that's five hundred and seventy-four, they're up four. And again, those are majority like a warrants that are, that are, that this unit is going out serving in a community or throughout the colony, actually. Total charges cleared, fourteen eighty-two in two thousand and twenty-two, and two thousand and twenty-three, there's thirteen and forty-five, down one hundred and thirty-seven. And that doesn't, again, doesn't, it's not a negative for us. It just shows that in two thousand and twenty-two, they cleared, they cleared more warrants out that were loans, outstanding warrants, and they continue that in two thousand and twenty-three by clearing a thirteen, almost fourteen hundred more. Arrest, three categories, majority of those arrests I'm showing you are within those total arrests, but I just, we just brought out some of the higher felony arrests that were made. Fifty-one in two thousand and twenty-three made it up fifteen when it comes to, and those arrests were in the category of murder, attempted murder, reckless homicide, some of those more dangerous warrants that came out. Some of the other arrests, rape, child molesting, sexual misconduct, those are even for the numbers for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three year. And then also for robbery, just down one. We want, made one less arrest on warrants for robbery compared to thirty-three, compared to two thousand and twenty-two, and that has a lot to do with the warrants that come out too. Some of our equipment that we implemented in two thousand and twenty-three is our utility body cameras, our utility system consists of intelligent body cameras, digital evidence management, and our rocket, which are communication and car video. Throughout, what that does allows us to make sure that we have the video needed in the cases that we do. One of the great things of our utility is that the camera starts recording when officers are dispatched. So when you reside, when you arrive on the scene, the camera starts automatic recording for you. So CAT activated. Also, we have smart holster sensors, which means if you pull your gun, your camera starts activating. Also coincides with your vehicles. Again, you open the door, you get out, camera starts recording. Officer down, some, for some reason, officer falls, gets in trouble, and they're down flat, camera starts recording, also sends out a page throughout the system to let us know that there's an officer down. The digital evidence management system makes sure that we have a secure chain of custody, immediate video playback, that means officers can look at that video immediately in their cars after it is recorded, and then live video streaming. So say for instance, myself or Chief Forker, we could be on station, and we can actually patch into your video and actually watch it live as it's being, as it's being conducted. The rocket allows for wireless access points throughout the cars accessible anywhere. Also, full video and audio coverage and vehicle diagnostics, and also smart AL, ALPR, which means license plate readers on the cars. Next, camera registry through, with utility comes an opportunity for the community to register cameras with the Michigan City Police Department. I would highly suggest if you have not to go onto our page, or if you have any questions, you can contact somebody, you can contact the police department and sign up, sign your cameras up. Does not allow us to have access to your cameras. Only access we have is what you will give us. What it does allow us, if you do have cameras in the area that we're investigating crimes, no longer do we have to just knock on your door. We can now send you a text or email requesting that footage if you have it, and all you do is send it back on that link. Next, our flock implementation, flock safety, as you all were here, we had a workshop, what, two weeks ago, I believe it was, where flock representatives came in and explained flock. I'm just going to highlight some flock stuff as we go forward. Part of our flock is our Raven in our Falcon cameras. Next. As you can see, our flock safety Raven is basically our gunshot detection, allows us to get to the scenes faster. It allows us to get notified when the shots actually go off instead of waiting for now somebody to call us or us, we have to hear it. In one of the success stories, you'll see, not only there's times where, yeah, possibly we can hear it, but also it can be hard sometimes pinpointing gunshots when they bounce off of the walls and so forth when we're listening. Sometimes we think they're somewhere they're not. Raven allows us to give us a pinpoint of the location where the gunshot came from. Next. And then a Falcon camera is a vehicle fingerprinted technology. Basically, we, we talk about how their LPR, the license plate readers, but what they also do is basically give a fingerprint of that car. So sometimes if you don't have a license plate, but if you have a black Chevy that has bumper stickers on the back, or you have a gray pickup truck with a ladder accessory on it, you can type those in, in the search and also get those vehicles that pass, that pass through the LPR. Next. As you see, two thousand and twenty-three, as we started tracking our flock usage, two thousand and twenty-three is a learning curve for us as far as tracking flock. If you all know anything about technology, it doesn't always come with everything you need at once. It gives you some good stuff, a lot of the stuff you, you want, but sometimes that other aspect of the data sometimes is, is still being tweaked. I will say in two thousand and twenty-four, flock has done a lot better of allowing us to track it easier without us having to create other templates and systems to do that. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we had a big learning curve throughout that year of how to track flock throughout the year. And as you can see, we broke it down by, by months, the different cases that led to arrests in investigations or crimes. There, and that came out to be a total of seventy-two instances where there was arrests made due to a flock being used in two thousand and twenty-three. Also, there's another twenty-five to thirty incidents where flock was just used to further investigations to, that are not in those numbers. Broke flock down by categories. You can see the different categories when you talk about crimes, different like criminal mischief, which are crimes against property, criminal recklessness, in that one of our murder investigations is in, is in that criminal reckless timeline, or I'm sorry, category, where flock was actually, may not have been used to actually find the suspect, but it was used to gain evidence to go along with the case of further redoing prosecution. Crimes against a person, as you can see, traffic offenses, theft, warrant arrest, all equal up to that seventy-two that I pointed out earlier. So, so some flock success stories. Two thousand and twenty-three, December, there's a robbery that occurred, two different instances where flock, the LPR readers were used to, once a vehicle description was determined by the victims, they were used to actually follow up on, actually between our stationary LPRs and the LPRs on our, on our vehicles, we were actually, to actually find a suspect vehicle and effecting arrests for prosecution. In November, two thousand and twenty-three, also, we had some ongoing shootings. Flock was used through the Raven detection to deter those suspects that were involved in a back-to-back shooting. Officers were out in the area at the time, and flock goes off, gets a vehicle description through searching through flock, and were able to effect the arrests and also confiscate some guns off the street. October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, gunshots were heard. Again, I tell you how gunshots, sometimes we may hear them, but we may not be able to pinpoint them. As the gunshots were heard by Officer Flock, goes off too immediately, which gets that cost of service time down, gives a pinpoint location when the gunshots went off, officers arrived, vehicle had left, but after description of the vehicle, the ALR, ALPRs were used to identify that vehicle and find where it went. And then the suspect was actually taken into custody and actually had the weapon in possession. Those are some flocks, that story that I wanted to give you all as I gave you this report. Next, MC twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three completed task goals, go next. Crime suppression unit. In two thousand and twenty-three, we activated a full-time crime suppression unit, three officers that went out and, they didn't answer your regular cost of service, but what they did, they went out and looked for your violent offenders. They looked out for those that were shooting, those that were selling illegal narcotics on the street, those that were transporting, you know, illegal things. They went to those hot spots and those hot areas. They were actually do street level investigations that tied them in with the narcotics division that further some investigations and able to bring in some great numbers for arrests and make the community safer. As you can see, total arrests in that unit was really, these are, these numbers come from them being activated full-time and right around June, and then up until about Octoberish. Total arrests, one hundred and twenty, total firearm seized, forty-one. The drug seized marijuana was forty-five pounds, cocaine, two hundred grams, methamphetamine, forty-five grams, heroin seized, ninety-one grams, controlled substance seized outside of those that we talked about, two hundred and eighteen, also other narcotics seized, eleven grams, and a total amount of money received is right under about forty-five hundred dollars. We also had the opportunity to receive a social worker through a grant, through Health Link, who partnered with us, provide us with a social worker who now allows us to do some case management in the community. There's a lot of calls that officers are sent to that we are sometimes not, don't have the resources and tools to, to have the right, the adequate answer at that time. Our social worker, Justin Coburn, then comes on board and helps out with that. Page is referred to, as you all know, last couple of months, I've been giving you her stats to her, her outcomes each month. So she is allowed to go and further investigate that or have case management on certain cases. It has shown that a social worker can actually alleviate some of those calls. I know prior to Justin coming in, on my years early on, getting on, there are certain people who we dealt with excessively. I mean, you know, twenty, thirty times a month, social workers with their case management can deplete those numbers for us. So now we're not being sent to those calls because every call of a service that comes in, officers are sent to, even though it could be something that we may not normally do, but if we're dispatch, we go. So Justin has been a guy saying, if you all didn't see, recently, we did a fourth, a four-part series of junior detectives with the girl Coalition Incorporated. Justin was instrumental in getting that together. So not only does she do, probably do the casework and deal with those that, that need her in different aspects, she also does some programming too in the department. Next. CIT training, along with our social worker. We are partnered with Drug Free Partnership. There's a, LaPorte County has a crisis intervention team, which is composed of not just police officers, but also community advocates. Our mayor, Angie Nelson Dyk, was part of that team, where officers were given a forty-hour course to deal with people who have mental, mental health issues or dealing with trauma. Coincides with what, with our social worker also, but now some of our officers are, know where those resources are and how to intervene outside of just arresting folks. Now we're able to guide people to the proper resources that they need to deal with for the issue that they're dealing with at the time. So part of that, the goal for Drug Free Partnership was to get fifty percent of law enforcement LaPorte County CIT train, Michigan City Police Department. We approximately have forty-five to fifty officers that are CIT trained just on our department. So it's been a success, and we still have, I think, one or two more trainings for the year. Big ideal, social media posts. Last year, at one point, prior to two thousand and twenty-three, we're probably about nineteen, twenty officers down. So there was implementation of social, social media used to help us with our recruiting and marketing. So Big Idea Company came about and allowed us to have better posts with more vibrant and attractive people to Michigan City. Also, they highlighted some of the things that made us attractive in those posts throughout the, throughout their time we had them. As you can see, some of the more posts, you know, they highlighted a one-on-one stories officers and staff who worked there and kind of asked them, why do you, you know, what, what is it that you like about MCPD? And gave, they gave their answers, and then it was posted on our social media throughout the year. Also, they created a landing page for us to, for people to go to, and gives all that information that you need about hiring, about how much you make, what's the requirements, some of our benefits. All that was on the social, on the landing page that was created with our partnership with Big Idea Company. And like I said, at one point, we're nineteen, nineteen, twenty officers down. And two thousand and twenty-three, from October of two thousand and twenty-two, when Chief Forker took over as chief, up until now, up until early January, we hired about twenty-three to twenty-five people. Those two out of the twenty, I think we had two that might have dropped off, but we had about twenty-three people in two thousand and twenty-three to get us where we are now. And presently, we're about, we're at eighty-one officers for a complement of eighty-four. So we're just three away from being full complement. In that, in those numbers, you'll see in some of these pictures, we actually were able to attract some lateral transfers, which are officers that already have training, they've already been through the police academy, they've been officers for one, two, three years. We just recently hired lateral transfer, they had nine years of service at another department that wanted to come back home to work here at Michigan City. So we were able to attract those officers. What's good about the lateral transfer officers, that they were able to get on the street right away. The last lateral transfer officer that we got was uniformed out by itself in a matter of two weeks. So our recruiting efforts have paid off for us in two thousand and twenty-three, and now we're in the mode of getting all those officers trained and on the street full-time. Community support. I want to throw this slider, give a big shout out, thank you to Pastor Kim Williams and Julianne Hill. During our recruiting efforts in our hiring process, we implemented, implemented a study sessions. Pastor Williams and Ms. Hill actually ran those for us at the police department, running at least anywhere from six to twelve sessions prior to testing. As we found out, there's a lot of people that had either test anxiety, or just hadn't been to school in a while, just needed some, some pointers. They did a great job. What we did though, we were able to track the, the numbers of people who went to the study sessions and then also took the test and then passed the test. If you went to the study session, you got a seventy-five percent chance of studying, of passing the test. So then it made our numbers go up for those who passed also. And two thousand and twenty-three made some promotions. Lieutenant Julian Ashley was promoted, promoted to the rank of captain. Chief Steve Forker, his merit rank was sergeant at the time, but he's, his merit rank is lieutenant. Corporal Melissa Solford was promoted to the merit rank of sergeant. Officer Adam Brinkmills promoted to the merit rank of corporal, and also Deshaun Harris was promoted to the merit rank of corporal. Our K nine division, we were able to expand it in two thousand and twenty-three. We had K nine Axel retired unexpectedly due to some medical issues. So we were able to not only replace K nine Axel, but also add two more K nines. If you, as you can see, we were able to add K nine Orc and K nine Donnie. Officer Callahan is a handler for K nine Orc, and also manages the K nine handler for Officer Donnie, or for Donnie, Officer Manz for K nine Donnie. Also, Blue Chip donated some money to Michigan City Police Department through the unit with. Um, also, uh Blue Chip donated uh some money to Michigan City Police Department through the uni, in conjunction with Uni Foundation, which allowed us to then. Go out and uh purchase uh K nine Lucky, who was we uh who replaced K nine Axel and um Officer Wego is his assistant handler. Um, some, some awards were presented. Officer of the Year, uh Exchange Club every year does Officer Year Award. And also does the Rotary Club, the Service Above Self Officer Year Award. Um Sergeant uh Kyle Chaparsky was Officer Year for the Exchange Club. And also Maximiliano Hernandez was Rotary Club Service Above Self Officer of the Year. Also Chris Smith Awards, a year award that we give the police department here in Michigan City. Uh basically, Officer Chris Smith was. Um, did all he needed to do to become an officer, was a a well-liked officer, a well-rounded officer, but unfortunately he has some medical issues that made him pass, but. Um, no matter what it was, whatever his how how his health was, he was committed to the job. So we have a Chris Smith awa- award that we give out every year. And twenty twenty-two, the recipient was Officer uh Nick Charo, and then twenty twenty-three recipient was Officer Dan uh Ravor. Uh, some of our community outreach wanted to highlight. Uh, we had Officer Dylan Travis who participated in a cop cycle for survivors. Um, it's a rate, it's a, it's a cycle that goes across the state of Indiana. Um, basically raising money for those uh survivors of officers that. Were killed in the line of duty. Um, also Officer Tillman was one of the officers that uh um helped out during the goodwill on the go. Goodwill basically brought together a different uh resources in the community and went to different aspects. Majority, they targeted more of your apartment complexes and they went there and basically put on a big event. Bring bringing those resources to the people instead of people have to go and find those resources. Uh, we were part of those events and Officer Tim was one of our main officers who helped out with that event. Uh, it's more of our community outreach. As you can see, every year, we, for the last ten, eleven years, we've been doing a youth leadership academy. Um, and we, that will be here coming up here next month, June seventeenth through the twenty-first, where we actually take sixth, seventh, eighth graders and. Just basically uh bring them through a week-long camp that uh we show them different parts of the city, different parts of policing, and they're exposed to community leaders um. Through leadership talks. Also, Citizens Police Academy, we do every year, um was conducted last year also, in which uh. Um, after COVID, we slowly brought our numbers up and last year, uh we'll continue to bring our numbers up to. Um, try to, you know, fit it up to about thirty to forty uh participants. Um, but it's a great opportunity for community. To come and see the uh behind the scenes of what we do at the Michigan City Police Department, and hopefully we hope to gain some cheerleaders for us when we start asking for stuff. Some more of our community outreach. Uh, you can see some of the uh pictures, uh Easter egg hunt, um thing we do every year. Um. The last couple of years, we've been blessed to have Terry Greatham from special events to kind of guide us uh before, because other than that, again, we're not events people. You know, we just did the best we could, but Terry has his line and everything is just like, and it's a lot more, less stress on on the chiefs too. So we appreciate Terry if you're in the crowd or wherever he's at. Um, um participated participated in United Way Lip Sync Battle. Um, Officer Charo and Officer Fletcher um did Guns N' Roses to help raise money for United Way. National Night, not National Night Out, uh last year was our first year doing that in years. Um, National Night Idols, basically an event that's uh throughout the nation is the first. Uh, Tuesday of August where different cities, police departments, communities, pallys come together and basically with the community to build those bonds. And have different events. Um, we will do another one this year. We're actually gonna start planning this week for that. Um, so you all might be getting some calls to help out. Um, Cops and Bobbers was something new for us. Um, we basically partnered with LaPorte City, LaPorte County, and Jay Daya. Um, do this event. It was actually a fishing event. Um, I did not participate because I cannot fish for my life. Um, Chief Forker was there. Uh, we actually took first place. Um, so we're looking forward to doing this year and we're the defending champ. So. You know, every once in a while, we see uh Sheriff uh Heig and Chief Buell, and we kind of, you know, rubbing it in their face that we better fish them in now. So. Um, the Doom Brook uh Dragon Boat Family Festival, we participated in that. Um, this year, we have already. Uh, started uh getting our team together. So those of you out there participating, we have. Um, hope to have a a boat full of SWAT team members. So bring your best, or we'll be number one. All right, letting y'all know. Um, Play for Jake Foundation Five K, the Vote for Heart, participated in that, where monies were raised for AEDs, put AEDs in police cars in LaPorte County. Holiday meals every year, police officers, uh we get together for um um Thanksgiving and Christmas. And we basically deliver meals for the Holiday Meals Committee. Um, they put them together and we deliver. Make sure we get the the meals delivered to those who can't get out to get them. Um, every holiday, we usually, and that's Thanksgiving and Christmas, between both of them is. We deliver probably over three hundred meals each, each holiday uh for that event. And then shop with the cop. Also, these, these are just some pictures that show you some of the different events that um that we did. Also, one of our partners that we solicited uh last night, and you all see here tonight, is Great News Life. Um, they're instrumental in also making sure that. Those moments that we, that we had in the community and those things that we did were documented well and and um the community knew what we're doing. So. As you can see, Chief Forker, we did the St. Patrick's Day parade. There's Chief Forker's hat. Um, that is the end of the the annual report. Um, if the council has any questions, I'm here to entertain any question that you have.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Um, thank you for the report. Uh, very detailed. Uh, much appreciated. Is this information open to the public?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yeah, is that the link that you were showing up there where they can get this information?
That's the landing page. If they need, if they want information, they can come and get it. Um, my records department, I have copies made. Um.
And that's for us?
Yes, it's free. And also, if they want to email, they could contact myself. Um, and I will make, I can email it out to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilman Culture.
Um, I just wanted to repeat a comment that was made yesterday at the Eastport meeting. Uh, so Wendy Willis is the president of that committee. Um, and she took on that task because she was interested in reducing the gunshots in Eastport. And yesterday, after your report, she got to say. It's like, why am I so nervous? Um, is that why we haven't heard any gunshots around here recently? So just wanted to say good job to you guys and for. Making the Nick community that much safer.
Thank you. Uh, one of the things I didn't, I don't know if I said it or not, but our Crime Suppression Unit will be out um starting full-time again here now. I think the end of this week is when they start. They already started uh full-time, so you'll see those guys out and they'll be, again, be tackling those issues. We're, you know, hoping to get an early start. On anything that might arise. I know everybody comes out. I always say they come out of hibernation after the winter time, so everybody's out and about, but. Um, we've tried to create a plan to give us an early start and um again, make sure that those numbers are down and that our arrests are up for those who did, who want to violate.
Councilman Danny?
Yes, uh, couple of questions here. Uh, number one is the, the social worker that we have, that's a a grant. Um, how long does that extend? Is that for one year, two years?
Um, so I can tell you this, it's year by year, but I've talked to the people at Health Link and um due to their grant writing things. It's at least it's 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 locked in for the next two years for sure, but they'll apply every year.
Perfect, perfect. And then um, I know you can, you know, sign up with your, so you'll uh be able to upload your camera footage or anything like that to the. Department. Do we have a lot of people that are taking advantage of that? Because I've had a lot of people ask about it and talk about it. Do we have a lot that are actually doing that?
I will say this, um when we first uh put it out, the, put it out there, we went to talking, then we did some Facebook posts. We had a lot of people actually signing cameras up. I will say, uh after um, it's been a couple of uh meetings that we usually have commands to have media monthly. And uh we asked about that, and so there's not a lot of people that respond or not as many people as we want to respond to our request. But we do have, I know for sure, just off the top of my head, I'm looking at, we do have about seventy-five. Uh, residents signed up for the camera registry um alone. Um, and that's just in um Michigan City. What happens is utility is used by not only Michigan City Police Department, but is used by LaPorte County Sheriff's Department, Long Beach, and also now. Um, LaPorte City just signed up for it. So we also, so if you, if they register in LaPorte City, the map, we're able to see on the map. Or those that also too. So, like I said, that's seventy-five is just within our city limits.
And final question, uh with that, you know, being able to sign up with the camera footage, does that work with Ring, Blink? You can do all of those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Cora?
Uh, Chief, uh, very nice presentation, a detailed presentation, couple of comments. Um, the social worker you have, you have one social worker, right?
Yes.
Like, uh, on, in the evenings and on weekends, uh, do you have access uh to their service?
Yeah, so uh Jocelyn has uh, she has uh transportation that we provide her, we also have cell phone. Um, she's basically on call somewhat. Um, and and this is not just from our requests, this is something that she also tells officers to call her whenever. Um, like for right now, she's actually in a a social work conference. Um, now, but she's still taking phone calls. I just called her earlier today about something, and she answered right before she got on the phone. So um, she, she uh. She works ma- majority during the day, mainly during the day, but she all, she alters her times and and she's available all the time for officers to call anytime. Um, majority of her referrals are done, they'll be the email. And again, like I say, also do call her all time of the night, and she will give you the information that you need or come out if she has to.
Thank you. Uh, one comment I have is you shared some information about uh slight reduction in the deaths from drug overdoses. Just a slight reduction. And there was an article in New York Times today that nationwide, there has been. Plateaued a little bit, and now this uh year, they're seeing a slight reduction in the death rate uh nationally also. So um, so thanks for everything you do, and I hope that trend continues because it's still very high, but at least it's headed in the right direction.
Right. And and I think that's a a combination of, again, always, we always say that when uh people work together in different. In different entities or different aspects of their their careers or their professions. Um, just because you're not a a law enforcement officer, don't mean as a medical professional, I can't work with you or the ERs or the coroner. Or, you know, the rehabilitation centers, when you all kind of work together and and share data, you're you're able to to do that. So I think a lot of collaborating and relationships that have been built. And data being shared has allowed us not only locally, but nationwide to bring those numbers down. Same thing with old Jocelyn, we only have one social worker, but she has many partners that she has created for us too. So. Sometimes it might not be Jocelyn you talk to. Jocelyn might call somebody to tell them to call you or give you that number to call, or we have access to those people also. Um. To, you know, better uh deal with issues.
And one last comment is, one of the reasons they cited for the slight reduction in uh death rate is because of the wide availability of Narcan.
Yes.
So that that has been helpful. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Yeah, Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for all this information. I appreciate you all coming. Um, and I want to give you a shout out for always being present in the community. You know, your list of all the community events that you participated, you are always visible. And I know anytime you're invited out somewhere, especially with the schools, you're there. And I think that collaboration with the community and especially our kids. Um, I think that's really important. So thank you all for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. One of the things that we've uh tried to work on the last a couple of years that this team has been together, myself, Chief Forker and Chief Cooney is. Our visibility in the community, um again, being more transparent, being available. Um, if I'm not there, Chief Forker be there, you know, it's. We we tackle it as a team, and we make sure, again, because I know it's important for the community to see us, and it's important for us to be around, you know, sometimes. We're not going to get the information at this meeting. Sometimes just being there, we get a lot of information, whether it complaints or, you know, or pat on the back, so we'll take them, you know, saying we'll move forward. So. Uh, appreciate that comment. And again, you'll you'll continue to see us out even more.
Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Chief Courtney, I do really want to thank you and your whole team because it really does take a whole team to make things work like they are. And I think your easy X accessibility um comes through some of the events you've been doing, like coffee at the McDonald's. People are invited, you're there, they know you're there. And then also being on W I M S radio, so people are able to make comments and or call in there. So um, your easy accessibility, I think, is creating relationships that will have long-term effects for the community. So thank you for that shift.
Thank you. I appreciate the comment. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Beatrice?
I'd like to thank you too for the uh the detail that's in this report. I don't think I've ever seen. This much information in a, in a annual report by the Chicago Police. So I appreciate that. I've I've been scanning over it and. In many areas, offenses are up, but arrests are up as well. So you're you're doing your best to stay on top of it. I guess the um, my question would be. As a legislative body, uh, is there, what can city council do to change some of these pluses to minuses?
More money. No, um, I mean, just be supportive of, you know, of what we're doing at the Michigan City Police Department, um, getting the word out to the community. Um, again. We need cheerleaders. And again, um, you'll see, hear me say it many times, we're not perfect by all means, um, are we? But we, we work on our imperfections. Um, to make them better, um, so we can better serve the community. Um, you know, uh, one of the things we just talked about was being, you know, the visibility. You know, we're starting to get more officers trained, more officers out by themselves. You'll see our shifts expanding. Some of our other units will expand to, you know. To take care of some of those problems. So again, we just, you know, we just want, you know, people to be, you know, cheerleaders and know that at the end of the time, like, we can take criticism. Um, but, you know, also, you know, know that we're doing our best and just know that we, you know, we're not trying to, you know, trying to hide from nobody. We're not trying to. You know, do nothing illegal or any of that, but we're, you know, we're gonna do the best that we can um in the eyes of the law, but also we're gonna do the best we can to serve this community. So. We're just looking for people to just to have some faith in us, but also know that we can, we can take criticism too.
Any other comments? I just have a couple uh comments, Chief, and just to educate the new council members. Is the report that you send to the FBI every year, right? And what class, what crimes are reported to the FBI?
The same kinds, reinforced crime report are some of the same crimes that are in here that are sent.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like murder, auto theft, assault, battery.
Yep.
Rape.
Yep.
Uh, what else is there? Because there's, there's a list of crimes that are committed. That are sent to the FBI every year on the city of Michigan City. Every city has to do that. So, yeah, I just wanted to. Make the council members aware that this report just doesn't stop with the city council. There's. All these major crimes, as they're classified, go to the FBI.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And then just one, my closing comment is, I'm glad to see that the. And I think we're starting to get some things under control because we have more officers. Okay, and we've been working on this issue for a long, long time. And then we got the media company in the town, and that that's helped out. Uh, the flock system, the new technology, the cameras, the body cameras, like you said, you know, I think. The body cameras that we supplied to police department, it sounds to me like they're probably some of the best that are on the market.
Yes.
Correct? Yeah, so uh, those are all good things. And so we're at eighty-one, eighty-four is our mark. So we got three, three more officers to hire. Okay, and just one thing, I was at the Board of Works meeting yesterday, and there was a citizen there saying that the flock. Camera on Union Street, okay, was knocked over. So if you could make a note of that and.
Yeah, we already took care of it.
No, you're not, your flock people or whoever does that. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right, next. Our mayor is here this evening, Mayor Dyche.
Good evening. I'm, it almost put me to sleep. It took too long, but anyway. Anyway. Um, good evening, Council President, Council Clerk, Deputy Clerk, Attorney. Uh, first of all, thank you for the report. Um, it's long overdue. I knew. And we were a little delayed, but uh we had quite a few things going on. But I I do want to provide a couple of updates. Um. And I know on the agenda tonight, we have uh ARPA, uh, some um requests. Um, but before I get to that, first of all, I want to send my um sincere condolences to all of you, um to Tracy, Brian, Don. Um, it's been um interesting and hard uh tough of weeks for for all of us. So. Um, I've been praying for all of you, and I just want to let you know that. Um. So uh, a couple of things, just an update, uh Sanitary District, we have a meeting tomorrow. Uh, we've been going through some changes. I've heard so many rumors, I thought I better share a couple of things. Um, we have had a few changes. We have an interim. Business manager, uh Chris Jagalski is there um as an interim right now. Uh, we have been going through. Some changes around finance. Um, our clerk's office has been phenomenal. Um, they have stepped in to support the um. The Sanitary District in so many ways, and that's everybody in the office. Um, has been working extremely hard for the last several months um with them. I met with, uh, I've been over there quite a bit. I met with the leaders yesterday just to um, to make sure they feel like they were being heard. Um, and talked through a lot of things, but some of the things I heard are just so ridiculous. I had to go over there and make sure they heard it from the horse's mouth. Um, so um, so we're working through some things, but it's gonna be all good. So I'm not worried about it too much. And then um, couple of things, dumping. We, we have a lot of dumping that's happening. Uh, we, we uh, I've turned over a couple to the police. Um, we need to continue to do that. We are also at Hitchcock. Um, we need to continue to do that. We are also at Hitchcock, looking to put more cameras up there um for a lot of illegal dumping that's happening. So I want the citizens to know. Um, tell your friends who keep coming from out of town and your local folks that are going out there. Um, some we know, some we don't. But uh, we will continue to add more cameras um to these areas that there are high dumping and we will prosecute. I want the public to understand that and know that. We are going to look at um some type of dumpster program for the neighborhoods um to allow dumpsters to be placed periodically throughout the year for um, for citizens to, to be able to, you know, get rid of some of their things. But elite dumping is illegal and you will be prosecuted. Uh, now with the ARPA, I know that there are several items uh on the ARPA list for this evening. I'll go through those when we get to that. Uh, but I want to make sure um that I shared uh just a couple of updates. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Um, I don't think so. Um, so when we get to those items on the agenda, I'll make sure to um talk through those and kind of explain because I appreciate all of the council people who were able to attend the workshop that we held. I thought it was a productive workshop um for the ARPA money. But also when we talk about the social worker for the police department, we've discussed um as an administration, how do we um possibly get additional um support for maybe an additional body or um for uh a social worker? And as I shared with you at the workshop, we have over a half a million dollars in our opioid settlement money. And we'll discuss how do we utilize that to educate the public, support programs that are existing. I know I'll be um at the county complex tomorrow. Um, we have a presentation for, from our uh countywide group um on getting some type of respite uh recovery home um in the county. So um, that is tomorrow. So I think uh we have some monies that we can proactively use to combat and educate uh Narcan, social worker. And we'll get a little bit of that money every year for the next, I don't know, decade, something like that. Um, but I did share that with you. So hopefully um sometime in the near future, we can start talking through that money and, and how we can utilize it to, to combat um uh the opioid use and, and some of the substance abuse issues that we have. Because again, um, it's, it's a you know, for most, most of us have been impacted by it. And I think uh we need to tackle it just like we do mental health. Um, it's a part of that same sphere of um uh habits that um, and that leads to arrest, that leads to homelessness, that leads to all those things. And so I think we can do some good things with that money that we have. Any questions for me? Any questions for me?
I have one. No?
Um, there's some people.
Go ahead, Councilman Nelson.
Thank you. Good, good evening, Mayor.
You're looking at me like.
The dumping site, that's in my war. I ride past there countless times throughout the day. Um, there's not a time I don't ride past and I'll see people out there dump. Can we just put a dumpster out there? That's just too much to be doing.
We have dumps, it, you know.
Like a literal dumpster out there. One of them just dumping it on the ground or just throwing it in the middle of the
You know what? Once we start making an example. There's science, but the cameras, we have cameras now. I don't think people realize the cameras are out.
No, they don't.
And I need y'all to prosecute the ones that I sent.
So I can come out every time I drive past and see somebody?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's one of those things until we create a culture that people realize that the city is not playing about um the cleanliness and that we will prosecute. I think it will continue to happen, but once we start making a concerted effort um and, and, and keeping those areas clean, you'll see a change. Yeah, because the fines are, fines will start happening, but these are, this is illegal dumping, dumping. It is, it is, it can be prosecuted. And I don't think people understand that. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ms. Sylent, on our uh agenda here, uh, I believe it's our, uh, are there any petitions this evening?
There are no petitions.
Communications?
There was no uh correspondence received.
Ms. Sylent, can you speak into the microphone a little bit? Thank you.
I'm getting there. Okay, I'm ready.
No communications?
There were no communications received.
Okay. And our first resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, tenth addition to the initial plan for use portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for various uses, including the city's website, marketing, farmer's market, cemetery maintenance and cemetery IT upgrades, on-call engineering services, sidewalk repair replacement to purchase a bucket truck and chipper replacement of the fuel distribution pit pedestal and key fob system, financial consulting, neighborhood safety, parking parks and beautification projects, IT upgrades and affordable housing initiatives. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Moldenhour, Ms. Lee, Mr. Preszwalinski, Dr. Cora and Mr. Beatry.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, before we move any further, I know the mayor wanted to address uh this resolution. So I'll call her um back up and then we'll move forward after she speaks on this.
All right. Good evening. I, I, I thought it was a very productive workshop that we had. Uh, we have about two point four million dollars that's um available. And I kind of wanted to go through uh the list of items that we've uh identified. And still, uh, I know that there's some, some departments have reached out, but they're just going to have to wait. We're figured out when we get to them by the cycle. There's, there might be some money and I'll, I'll tell you a little bit about that. So um, under revenue replacement, we have a list of several items that we talked through. Um, one being accessibility to the public website and marketing. We, we know we have an image problem, but we also know we have an access problem for citizens to be able to get information, good information. We know our website is inadequate and we know we spent a ton of money on website and marketing that probably is five, six times more than this. The money that I've requested for marketing in the website is through twenty twenty-six. Most of the requests that I've made are to get us through twenty twenty-six. Uh, we have to spend all funds by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And my goal is, I know we're going to be cash strapped next year. So the request that I've requested is really truly to try to help offset some of the uh budgetary items as well, so that it gives us a chance as a new council, new administration to put forth budgets that are a little bit more uh responsible um as we move forward. I did have, um, I think everybody got a copy. There is an amendment that I hope everybody got a copy. Did everybody, everybody got a copy? So there was an addition, um, the farmer's market and food insecurity, we just
Not to interrupt.
Yes.
But yeah, I didn't, did everybody get a copy of that amendment? Okay. Is it here? Is paper copy? No, can I have one please?
Yeah, and it's, it's a simple, simple, um.
Yeah, I, and I just like to have a copy of the amendment.
Yeah. And so I'll ask for that amendment, but it's um just to
Okay. Okay.
It's just to increase the thirty-five thousand to, to uh, uh thirty thousand to fifty thousand. Um, so um, I belong to the Mayor's Food Insecurity Council with the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And one of the programs that was presented to us um was a program for um people on SNAP, Medicaid, Medicare um through Instacart. And one of our, and I didn't get a chance to talk about our interns, but our intern, uh, one of our interns will be focused on food deserts, food insecurity and those items. And um, I think uh the additional twenty thousand will help supplement some of the program. The program uh for uh food delivery to folks that meet the, the, the government criteria for Medicaid. So it's not listed in there, but the money is in there for the food insecurity part. So it's just to, to push forward some programming in that, in that um area. The farmer's market we talked about, I'm looking at uh transitioning the farmer's market to a different location. Working with the um, uh, the events coordinator in the Parks Department to have a larger, more visible site. Uh, the organization that we're going to be working with is called The Collective. They accept SNAP benefits. Um, one of the goals for the farmer's market is to grow it, but to also provide uh fruits and vegetables to folks that use SNAP. And in many cases, they double their money um by using their SNAP benefit at the market. So we want to make sure that we identify a location in the food desert that could provide for that. And, and this partnership will be through twenty twenty-six. Uh, we just got approved um with the USDA to do three pop-ups this year to prepare people for the new farmer's market next year as it begins. Um, the next item is cemetery maintenance and IT upgrades. This is to automate uh eh the locations of your loved ones at the cemetery. Right now, everything, when I say everything, almost everything is on paper right now at the cemetery. So Jeff Lenesky did a wonderful job presenting some information to you. Um, they also have a maintenance fund. So um, they've already gone to their board to, to do a match to this money if it passes. So the goal is to start getting um every uh plot um identified and documented and put into a kiosk that people will be able to go up to push their last name and identify their loved one. Uh, on-call engineering services. So as you know, the city's growing. We did not budget any engineering money uh for engineering services. And as you know, our Board of Works has been busy. Uh, we get a lot of calls. Um, Tim Warner has done a wonderful job, fantastic job. Uh, and uh going out, meeting the needs. Um, we've had to do some change orders of it, for a lot of things. Um, but with uh almost five million dollars in road paving this year. And then uh, and the, the rail line being completed, uh, the double track. It just calls for a lot more. Um, we're doing uh traffic counts and studies and looking at the lights and how they work together. It's just a lot going on. So we know that we need some of these additional services that were not included in the budget. Sidewalk repair and replacement, this has become a big one. Going forward, we hope to provide the council with a plan for the next couple of years. Right now, we have sidewalk replacements all over the place. Some things don't make sense, some do. And uh, we've missed uh a lot of sidewalks that are part of these projects that we currently have. So we're asking for additional two hundred thousand dollars. We know that we have uh some areas that are dangerous uh and, and can be a liability. Two hundred thousand dollars is worth more than a insurance claim by a citizen falling. So um, that request. Uh, purchase of used bucket truck and chipper. And for the public, I know I'm rattling this off, um, our workshop, we kind of went through all of these. But right now, we pay approximately uh eighty thousand dollars a year in contract services for people to come do this work for us. So we'll get our bang for our buck in having this used bucket truck and chipper within a year, actually a year and a half. So it was more of a, how do we cut costs in the future by doing something today? Uh, replacement of our fuel distribution pedestal and key fob system. Yeah, it's uh out in central maintenance. We've had several issues out refueling all of our vehicles in recent um months. And so this is just a, a way to do that and, and um replace what the old technology that we have. Software for planning department, we put this out to a RFP, uh, through a RFP process. We've narrowed it down to two uh vendors. Uh, this is one of the it areas that we've had probably the most complaints around permitting, around code enforcement, all those things. And this money is to cover the cost to implement that software system and get us on the right track with uh documenting. And right now, let, let me give you for example, and Scotty, you may have to give me, give me the numbers, but our permits went from what, how much? Just tell me the number. We had three thousand permits last year compared to a few hundred the previous year. Paper, all on paper, all on paper. So we, we, we get complaints and I understand that. But if I have a team that's spending all their time writing and coming in the office and spending fifty, sixty percent of their time dealing with paper, and we did three thousand permits last year. Not five hundred like we normally do, three thousand. That is not going to stop. Um, so we've always operated as a, a town and we are a city, a city that's growing. And so thus we need the resources and, and technoly, technology to support that. And that's what that money is. Um, financial consulting, um, this is about a capital asset management plan and some proactive forecasting for the council and the administration. Uh, for the last couple of years, we've seen a decline in riverboat funds, our Boyd Development Fund. Uh, and we know we have our tax caps, but we're in the midst of going through our uh process with our fee structures. And the Baker Tilly and they've come back and we're reviewing all that. We haven't raised any fees since twenty fifteen. Some nineteen seventy something. And towns around us, that is a revenue source that contractors know they have, you know, they know that they have that. But we have not kept up with inflation or the times or the increase in how you do business. What we charge does not even cover the people who are doing the work, not even our clerical staff that's doing the work. So um, so that's important for us as we plan moving forward. Uh, another big bucket, neighborhood safety parks and beautification projects. That one is, these are the largest buckets, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, this um is going to, there's more to come for this bucket with the council to, to help make those decisions. Um, IT upgrades. We are mandated um to have certain uh licensing, storage, authentication protocols because of the cybersecurity. Um, so we are asking for that money. And then last but not least, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for affordable housing initiatives, including but not limited to home weatherization program, home or ed, homeowner education and incentive program and senior home repair assistance program. So um, the two big buckets, um, the city council will come together with the administration to really talk through those. Uh, we're going to ho- host a, a workshop for all of the housing organizations that provide education, that do all those things to come. And we might possibly think about putting our, uh, putting, putting out some type of RFP for them to, you know, submit something to us. Uh, because again, um, we've had a workshop with homework bound and some other, um, talked about some other things. But um, my um opinion has been that uh, we need to support a larger number of families that are um food in, I mean, not food insecure, but home insecure. Um, and making sure that the residents that are here that own their homes, that are struggling to put windows, doors and all those things on their homes, that we support them. And also uh figure out how to get people in homes. And, and we know that the highest poverty rate in Michigan City is children. So we need to really focus on families with children and elderly people that are struggling to, you know, to get their taxes paid and keep their houses um weatherized. So um, all of these things on here, um, again, equate to the two point four million. But we are um analyzing open P E O's, purchase orders that we have open. I've met with the police department about the animal kennel uh project. So there might be some monies that come back. Um, what I'm sharing with the departments is that I would like to have everything closed out for the majority of those things, not the big ticket items, but all these, you got three thousand here, ten thousand here. Then maybe we figure out by October, what are some capital things we can do with the money we have left? So um, this is a, this is a liv- livable, breathing document. Um, and like I said, whatever we don't allocate or if we get money back, I'll come back to you and we'll look at some uh capital projects. I know capital purchases that the street department and some other folks are asking for that I told them, you know what, your time will come later. In the meantime, we need to make sure we put some money back into the public's hands and that we support and elevate the families that are here. We've spent enough on capital improvements. So any questions for me before you?
Any questions for the mayor?
Right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So before this evening on this resolution, the sponsors have anything that they would like to say at this time? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I, I have my light on, but I was just waiting for it to come back to me so I can make the motion for the, the change from thirty thousand to the fifty thousand and change the total amount. So I'll wait for it to come back to us for, after public and anything like that before I make that motion.
Okay, do the council, any other sponsors have anything they'd like to say? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this resolution?
Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, that was a really good informative workshop we had last week. It's a lot of good information. I like Mayor Angie's site plan for the Sixth and Willard, the old police substation property. And she's looking to make that into the Joe Hawkins Community Resource Center. I like her idea about moving the food, the, the farmer's market location. I think an ideal place for that would be, and I don't know a lot of you know that, but the city does own that, that three acres of land north of the school administration building on Carroll Avenue. That was approved in two thousand and nineteen. I know Councilman Prozabulinski and Beatry voted, and Dabney voted against it then. But they wanted to put a dog park there and ever since then, that property, they haven't been, the only thing to park with farmers is more the grass. So I think that would be a great filling for the food. Matter of fact, they might want to expand the farmer's market all week long if it's there. I'm against this homework bound. I saw that workshop you had. I think that's going to be a disaster. You know, that's really, I said at the workshop, it's not going to contribute, it's not going to contribute to our tax base. There's only going to be two families, two people living each unit. There's not going to be families there. They're not going to do anything to increase the enrollment at the Michigan City area schools. But they say it's on the bus route, but that's only on the number one bus route. And the number one bus route only goes as far south as the market mall. It doesn't go extending Myers or Menards or anything like that. I think the best option for them would just to have a public auction and them to sell off that property and liquidate it and get it back on the same tax rolls. In the same manner, that was done with the county home about five years ago, is when Dr. Vidia Cora was on the county commission. That's just all my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this resolution? Having none?
And that's so fast. It's got Melton and Kedwood Place. It's a lot of money. I mean, it's approximately two point four million, it looks like we're spending, but most of that's for over two years. And it's money we have to use or lose, apparently. So these can be good, good things to do. It's certainly needed. Professionalism and equipment. The parks need it, the cemetery needs it. So I'm sure you're all going to vote for it anyway, but it sounds like it's a good idea and a good use of the funds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yes, and I just wanted to clarify, if it was not clear, yes, this is use it or lose it. This is money that was given to us by the federal government when they, I can't recall the actual program, but we had about sixteen million dollars or so. And we've spent down now and, and, and paid out a lot of, bought a lot of assets for the city. So it is, they spend it or we, we lose it. So just wanted to make sure that the public knew that, that we're not throwing away funds here. We, we do have to spend this.
Thank you, Councilman. Did you make the amendment? Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
I was talking to Councilwoman Molenhour about. So on the copy that I got, I got the ordinance here from the clerk. On your resolution, is the amendment on the resolution also?
Yeah, it's going to be the, the same changes that would go to the resolution and then the following ordinance to change those dollar amounts.
Okay, yeah, what, what I'm saying is it has to be on the resolution. Okay, yes, honor. Okay, all right, I didn't get that. I just want, I didn't have a copy of that. Okay. All right, so there's a motion made for the amendment for the food, farmer's market and food insecurities are second?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Cora. Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
And Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nylev. Our first ordinance on first reading this evening by title only?
Excuse me, I have a question, Don, Mr. President. We, we voted the motion to make that amendment. Now, do we have to make the motion to approve?
Yeah, the resolution. You're right. I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. Okay, now is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So, support.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilman Beatry and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you. Now we're done with the resolution. All right, moving on to our first ordinance this evening by title only, Ms. Nylev?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the A R P A coronavirus local physical recovery fund for the tenth addition to the initial plan for use of portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for various uses, including the city's website, marketing, farmer's markets, cemetery maintenance and I T upgrades, on-call engineering services, sidewalk repair and replacement to purchase a bucket truck and chipper replacement of the fuel distribution pedestal and key fob system, financial consulting, neighborhood safety, parks and beautification projects, I T upgrades and affordable housing initiatives. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Maldonar, Ms. Lee, Mr. Prozabulinski, Dr. Cora and Mr. Beatry.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Dabney?
Yes, before we move forward, I would like to, like, make the motion to amend the ordinance going forward to change the farmer's market bucket from thirty thousand dollars to fifty thousand. Which would then take the total amount from two million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars to two million, four hundred eighteen thousand and five hundred dollars. Second.
And there's been a motion by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Cora. Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Dr. Cora?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylev. And is there any public comment, any public comment on this ordinance? Any public comment on this ordinance? Having none? Any council comment? Any council comment? This ordinance will be held over for a second meeting at our next council meeting. Ms. Nylev, I believe we are on to our first ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only amending the zoning map of the city of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana to rezone real property located at six twenty-five East U S Highway twenty. Pin forty forty-six dash five dash four dash four five two dash oh three six point oh 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 dash oh oh nine from the R three A and B two to zoning district classification to a A B three highway commercial zoning district classification. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Dr. Cora.
And thank you, Ms. Nylev. You did a good job of reading that pin number. And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Dabney?
Just wanted to, you know, put out in the public that we do have to have a formal public hearing on this tonight. We're actually, I'm sorry, we already had the formal public hearing in the planning commission meeting back on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, which means we can waive the rules and do second and third reading tonight. And I would make a motion that we do waive those rules and, and take second and third reading tonight on this zoning and a second.
Okay, there's been a motion to have third reading this evening and a second by Dr. Cora. Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Yeah, Tommy Klobic, I think this is great. I think they're going to put a brand new Hyundai dealership in there. That was at the planning commission that was approved. I think that's a really good thing they're going to take. It was the old RV dealership and it was Ronald Hamilton Senior's American Autobuy. They've kind of gone to pot. I think they're about eleven thousand delinquent paying their property taxes. So it's all going to get back on the tax rolls and all that good stuff. I don't, they say years ago, I think that was Debeja Oldsmobile, so that'll be, be reestablished. So that's a good thing. They have another blighted property off of the U S twenty corridor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, public comment is now closed. Ms. Nylev, this rate, this ordinance on third reading, please?
An ordinance on third reading by title only amending the zoning map of the city of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana to rezone real property located at six twenty-five East U S Highway twenty. Parcel number forty-six dash five dash four dash four five two dash oh three six point oh 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 dash zero zero nine from the R three A low-rise multiple family and B two general commercial zoning district classification to a B three highway commercial zoning district classification. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Dr. Cora.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, public comment is closed. Is there any council comments? Councilman Dabney?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Beatry. Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nylev. Our second ordinance on second reading this evening by title only, please, Ms. Nylev?
An ordinance on second reading by title only amending section sixty-six dash thirty-one and section sixty-six dash fifty-one in chapter of the Michigan City Municipal Code to change the name of the Human Rights Director to the Assistant Human Resource Director. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatry, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Lee, Dr. Cora and Ms. Maldonar.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Beatry?
I don't really have anything else to add to the ordinance itself that wasn't already set at second reading or at first reading. But since the mayor's in the audience, is there a pressing need to move this to third reading? Or can you wait for two more weeks?
I, I would love for it to pass on third reading tonight. We, I know the Human Rights Commission has been without and I would like to get the job posted, because I still got to post the job and then do the applicants and do the hiring process. So it would be nice to have it on third reading this evening.
That would be what I'd recommend then, that we move to third reading tonight on this ordinance.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilman Beatry for third reading and seconded by Councilman Cora. Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
And is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, Ms. Nylev, third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only amending section sixty-six dash thirty-one and section sixty-six dash fifty-one in chapter sixty-six of the Michigan City Municipal Code to change the name of the Human Rights Director to the Assistant Human Resource Director. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatry, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Lee, Dr. Cora and Ms. Maldonar.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add? Councilman Beatry?
Oh, I was just waiting to recommend approval. If no one else had it.
Well, no, we still have to go public comment. Okay, okay, no council comments. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Public comment is closed. Any council comments? Councilman Beatry?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded by Councilman Nelson. Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, and Ms. Nylev, our last ordinance on second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance on second reading by title only amending ordinance number four seven oh seven commonly known as the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance to reflect that the position of the Human Rights Director shall now be known as the Assistant Human Resource Director. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatry, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Maldonar and Ms. Lee.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Councilman Beatry?
Once again, I'd like to, motion that we move to third reading, second.
There's been a motion by Councilman Beatry for third reading and seconded by Councilman Cora. Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prozabulinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylev. Is there anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none? Ms. Nylev? Please have, please read this ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only amending ordinance number four seven oh seven commonly known as the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance to reflect that the position of Human Rights Director shall now be known as the Assistant Human Resource Director. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatry, Mr. Coulter, Ms. Maldonar and Ms. Lee.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to say at this time? Having none, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Having none, public comment is closed. Council comments?
Before they
To Beatry or Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that these last two ordinances, these are examples of the city. You know, combining positions and becoming more efficient. We've had some other ones that we've approved already. And this is a good step for us moving forward, improving the efficiency of our city government. And I think you're going to see a lot more of this as we continue forward. So I'm in big support of this.
Okay, any other council comments?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second? Councilman Dabney? Okay. There's been a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Cora? Uh, Councilman Cora, seconded the motion. Ms. Nylav on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
And Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nylav. And that brings us to new business this evening?
We have one more ordinance, sir.
Oh, am I getting ahead of myself? As, uh, we still have one more ordinance on third reading? Ms. Nylav?
An ordinance on third reading by title only creating section two dash four four oh in the Michigan City Municipal Code to establish general rules for all city boards, commissions, and committees. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Coulter, Mr. Preszbalinski, Mr. Beatry, and Ms. Moldenauer.
And do the authors have anything they'd like to add at this time? Nothing? Okay, anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Yeah, Tommy Kalovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. You know, all these boards and commissions are established by ordinance. If anybody's, well, considering they serve on a board or commission, it's imperative that they read that ordinance that that your board and commission apply in addition to their, uh, their bylaws before they apply to that subcommission or, you know, so an example later on, there's the Fire Ameri Commission, one of the members is gonna have to drop out because they didn't meet the requirements of the ordinance. It's just my thought. Thank you.
Yes, Scott Mallon, two hundred Kenwood Place. Um, on first reading, I spoke out about this. I don't know if these new rules, they're a good idea. I don't know if they include that all, uh, of these committees and commissions that are uh, responsible for the Open Meetings Act publish their meetings in the municipal calendar. I've been trying to go to many, many meetings and there have been many I've missed because they're not on the municipal calendar. Even this common, and sometimes, uh, meetings are rescheduled and it's not reflected on the calendar. That's happened to this very common council. For exa- uh, for example, on election day, which is on a Tuesday, this will be moved to a Wednesday. If you don't know that, you miss the meeting. So again, I don't know if this is in this, uh, that these commissions are responsible for posting it, maybe through the city clerk. There needs to be a clearinghouse where all these open meeting, uh, necessary requirements are posted on the municipal calendar. If it's not in this, I would ask that this be tabled and amended to include that appropriate language. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public?
There is no working calendar, not yet. So, um, I encourage you to pass it. The administration is responsible for, um, making sure that the public has access to the meetings. The clerk is here. That's her role as well. Uh, we'll get through it, but we don't have the technology that works, um, to, to do it. So it's just what it is at this point. So, um, we'll get there a hundred fifty days and it's been broken for a long time. Can't fix everything in a hundred fifty days. So just give us some time and we'll get to the calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, any other public comment? Having none, public comment is closed. Council comment? Any council comment?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Beatry, motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Nylav on the vote?
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nylav. And this evening, under new business, Mayor Angie is asking the city council for their advice and consent regarding the reappointment of Joey Dalton and Dwayne Hurt along with a new appointment of Mr. Anthony Hicks as a member of the Michigan City Preservation Commission with his appointment expiring March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And a question for the attorney. Uh, we can just go ahead and vote on these tonight if the council decides to, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Pardon? Okay, would you like to come up to the, uh, podium, sir, and introduce yourself and say a few words and will you have to offer the Preservation Commission?
Uh, first, let me say, um, uh, Mrs. Dalton and Dwayne Hurt have been fantastic on, on the, uh, on the board. Uh, she's served as president and would like to continue. Um, and what I'm trying to encourage is to get younger people involved on some of these boards and commissions and into the city, uh, leadership positions. And so I'll introduce Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, council president, council, um, I ask that you all approve it. Um, I am new to the city. I've been here three years. Um, I look forward to working, um, alongside all the current members of the, um, commission and bring new ideas, um, to the historical, uh, Preservation Commission. Um, and yeah, I look forward to your support. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of the council of the proposed appointee? Okay. No, Councilman Coulter?
Yeah.
You got a question?
Not really a question, but as the liaison to this commission, I'm enthusiastic about these three appointments. They're all fantastic people and yeah, I, they're awesome. These are great.
Okay. Councilman Cora, you got a? No, I, I don't think that was a motion. I
We need a motion. Is that the next step?
Yeah, you have to make a motion to
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second to I can't, I can't put it in anybody's words. I mean,
To approve all three of the, uh,
Okay.
appointments.
Okay, alright. So there's been a motion and a second by Dr. Cora to approve all three uh, appointee, uh, appointees uh, to the Michigan City Historical Preservation Commission. And we can do it on a yay vote and be done with it. All those in favor, it's in fight by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Alright. Congratulations, Mr. Hicks. Welcome to the Historic Preservation Committee. And the next, Mayor Angie is asking the Michigan City Common Council for their advice and consent regarding the appointment of Kim Schlieba as a member of the Michigan City Port Authority replacing Amanda Butner, whose appointment expired March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And I know that Ms. Schlieba is not here this evening. Uh, what is the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve the, the appointment of, uh, Ms. Kim Schlieba.
Support.
Who's this support from? Councilman Dabney? Okay, so there was a motion by Dr. Cora and seconded by Councilman Dabney. All those in favor, sing invite by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Ms. Kim Schlieba is now on the Port Authority. Under unfinished business this evening, the Michigan City City Council has one appointment to the Fire Ameri Commission. Term will begin immediately and expire on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. And I know on our agenda here, Andy Heineck's name is still on there, but Andy Heineck's name, uh, he handed in a letter of resignation because he did not qualify for the position. So that leaves William Esper and Paul Preszbalinski. And we will take a, uh, vote down the line and either vote for Preszbalinski or vote for Esper. And Ms. Nylav on the vote?
Ms. Lee?
William Esper?
Ms. Moldenauer?
Dr. William Esper?
Mr. Nelson?
Esper.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Paul Preszbalinski.
Mr. Beatry?
Esper.
Mr. Coulter?
Dr. Esper.
Mr. Dabney?
Esper.
And Dr. Cora?
That's it.
We have seven for Mr. Esper and one for Mr. Preszbalinski.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Nylav. Uh, that completes everything. Under unfinished business? Public comment?
Yeah, Tommy Kalovic.
There is a three-minute time limit on?
Yeah, Tommy Kalovic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I want to congratulate my successor on the Michigan City Fire Ameri, Dr. Bill Esper. I think he'll be great. I think we need a physician on there because, you know, our probationary firefighters and our they got after a year, they have to be able to pass their EMT certifications. And that's one of the big issues we're having. If they don't pass their C, EMT certification, we have to let them go. So I think that that's really major that we have a doctor and somebody that can, can help them with that. Uh, I just want to give my condolences to all the council members on the losses of your family members. Now, I want to mention, you know, this is Memorial Day, Happy Memorial Day. I want to encourage everybody to enjoy the food truck fest. We're gonna have in Federals Alley this weekend. I know they're gonna have about twenty of them. My favorite one is always the Jamaican, the cool running Jamaican jerk chicken food truck. They're always Jamaican me happy. So I also encourage everybody to go out and, and, uh, support the farmer's market. Now it's going on at Ethan, Ethan Washington every Saturday from eight to noon. You know, they want to make sure it closes on noon because the mommy cow said to the baby cow, it's past your bedtime. But it's sad, I'm really looking for the NFL. See, I already got my Brayden Fisk jersey. I should have wore it tonight. It's it's a lot of good things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Uh, I'd like to extend my condolences to all of you that have had losses. I also had one a couple of weeks ago, my nephew, so.
Mm-hmm.
But I did gain a, a great granddaughter, the thirteenth. So that's the third great granddaughter I have and I have a great grandson. They, they live down in Lagodee, Indiana. It's like five hours away from here, so I don't get to see them much. Thanks.
No, you're welcome.
Scott Mallon, two hundred Kenwood Place. My condolences as well to everybody that suffered losses. Very difficult. And I appreciate your service to the community. Um, regarding the social workers, one of the, uh, the police force, one of the great additions we've had to the force. Uh, we all know the police. Uh, many other calls are actually mental health related and it's great. We have a social worker. Um, given that we've been so, that we're nearly fully staffed on the police department, it sounds like two or three positions are yet unfilled. Um, and given that we've added the flock system, which adds efficiency to the police and has the same cost as approximately three officers. Um, I would propose that we try to get a social worker to be one of those open positions as opposed to a sworn officer. I think we've gotten by with far fewer than the allocated numbers for years. It sounds like our crime rate, and this is another thing to be heralded, uh, index crimes were all down. Property crimes were down about twenty percent. I think we need to be screaming from the mountain tops, the crime is down in Michigan City. Because the perception of most people is that crime is up. And in fact, it is down, not only here, but nationwide, frankly. Um, so it's great that we have a social worker. I think we might be able to allocate funds from the uniform division to fund a full-time social worker if and when grants run out. And I think it's important, again, we share the news that crime is down thanks to the hard work of our police department that you apparently have funded very well with a lot of new technology over the last few years. Um, it's having an effect. And that should probably be reflected in their budget. It can't always go up. Maybe they can get by with one or two fewer, uh, people. That's all. Thanks. And again, thanks for your service. Happy Memorial Day, everyone.
Yeah.
And thanks to the police chief for such a great report.
Uh, Martin Corley, Chief of Police, Michigan City Police Department. I just wanted to share something uh, that I overlooked during the, my moment of when I was giving the report. Um, if you haven't seen it, it's posted on our Facebook last night. Um, basically in a response to a resolution that you all passed, reference, uh, some gun safety. We are doing what we call Michigan City Safe Citizens, um, series. Basically a collaboration between Michigan City Police Department, Michigan City Fire Department, and also La Porte County EMS. We're gonna do a four-part series, um, every Thursday in the month of June at the police department. We'll have, uh, a certain topic. So June sixth, um, it will be gun safety where we will talk about, um, how to properly store your gun, um, some things, you know, to keep your gun safe. And also we'll pass out, uh, gun locks during that session. Um, June thirteenth, the La Porte County EMS will do a series called Stop the Bleed, which will give you some, um, some, uh, advice and resources on how to, um, guess, prep a gunshot wound if it happens, be, you know, prior to EMS arriving or first responders arriving. Um, June twentieth will be fire safety. Fire department will talk about fire safety, um, during that part. And then on June twenty-seventh, police department will do what we call personal protection. We'll give you some techniques to get out of bad situations. Um, every, uh, part of the series will be at the Michigan City Police Department, our community room, and it'll be approximately, uh, start at four thirty and go to about six o'clock. Uh, we'll also be giving out some swag and some other things for those who attend. Um, if you want to attend, we ask that you RSVP, um, and it's all listed on our Facebook page. I'm sorry, I don't have flyers tonight. We'll, but I will do, I'll make sure I email every city council person a flyer that has a QR code to, um, for people to RSVP. So we ask that you RSVP so we know the numbers to expect. Um, when we, when, um, we, during the series. So I just wanted to give that information because it's coming up and, um, I didn't get a chance to give it. And again, a lot of this information is on our Facebook page. It posted last night. So thank you.
Alright, thank you, chief. Anyone else from the public?
Just as an FYI, uh, next week, we'll have approximately twenty-five interns starting next week. So on Tuesday, if the council, anybody from the council would like to come, uh, we're doing kind of a one-day orientation. Uh, ten o'clock, you know, we'll do some introductions. Uh, we have they are at the cemetery, airport, transit, um, controller's office, engineer's office, planning, mayor's office, park department, events. All over the place. So they're gonna be working on a lot of projects this summer. Um, and the Promise Scholarship, I just thought about it, um, is due. It's coming up due in June, early in June. Don't have the exact date. I feel like it's like the fifth, but don't quote me on that, but the Promise Scholarship is due. We've had very few applications. Um, you know, we're moving towards a electronic system, but it won't really be ready until next year. But, um, have physically gone and signed them up and we're less than a dozen.
How many?
Uh, probably less than a dozen. And so, um, the other thing with that is, uh, um, so now they're starting to show up in the office this week because it's due, right? Graduation is coming. And now they're waiting until the last minute. So if you have a student uh, graduating from Michigan City High School Marquette and you are a resident of Michigan City, um, yeah, please submit your applications. They, uh, what's today? There is only like two weeks left and they're graduating on the second and it's due I think that week right after they graduate. So, you know, they'll need transcripts. They'll need those things and they're gonna be out of school here soon. So if you know anyone, please encourage them to do that. Um, one of the good things about, um, the changes that we made this year is that we'll be able to, um, support some non-int traditional students going forward at some point in time for scholarships. And I thank you all for passing that. Um, I've been talking with, um, the chancellor from Ivy Tech, you know, um, working diligently with him to get a new building built in Michigan City. Um, so I may be coming to you all for letters of support or some type of resolution. Maybe we should do a resolution at the next council meeting. Um, the last time they went to session with the state, we were number two on the list to get a new building. And number one was Indianapolis administrative, the administration. Well, they chose them. They needed new digs, I guess, but, um, what I'm trying to explain to them is that if the city council and the administration is gonna support, uh, scholarships for local residents, uh, we need programs that support jobs that are high-tech. jobs that are high-tech. And um I think that, I told them that was the first step from the city to show that we support uh an Ivy Tech. Um, so uh more to come on that. Um, it's a longer budget season for next year, but um we have to start getting engaged and showing that we're gonna support an effort to become number one. I think we're gonna be fighting with, uh not fighting with, but yeah, up against Fort Wayne this time. So we have to show the need. We have the lowest college attainment in the state of Indiana, LaPorte County overall. So I think we have the numbers, but we as a council have to show that we really support so uh council and administration. So I will try to get something um to you on some numbers and data and maybe we can get a resolution passed for that. But um we're doing internships, we're offering scholarships, we're doing all these things. Um, so we need, we need that um that building here. So um and I think that was it. Oh, so we have the food truck festival, but then we have the sand um castle, the sand um uh singing sand sculpture that's coming up that first weekend in June as well. Um, so I wanted to make sure I put that out there for the public as well. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public which should speak at this time? Anyone else from the public which should speak? Public comment is now closed. Council comments? Councilwoman Lee?
Um, I have a couple of announcements of events coming up. On Saturday, June fifteen, uh there will be Michigan City Pride Fest at the Guy Foreman Amphitheater uh from one PM to eight PM. And then some Juneteenth celebrations on Sunday, June sixteenth, from eleven to s- no, from eight to question mark, um is a Juneteenth celebration at Guy Foreman Amphitheater, um Sunday, June sixteenth. And then on actual Juneteenth, Wednesday, there is a celebration at West Westcott Park from eleven to six PM.
Councilwoman Maldonar?
Yeah, I wanted to let my um fellow um city council persons and also the public know that I attended the Strong Towns Gathering, which happened in Cincinnati last week. And I concentrated on attending housing and walkable town sessions. And when I received the recorded videos of those sessions, I'm willing to share them with anybody who's interested. So just let me know and I can forward those to you. And that goes for um both elected officials and also for the public at large. It was an excellent session. There were people there from across the whole United States and Canada. And I learned a lot, that's what I can say. So I'm anxious to share some of that good information with everybody.
Any other council comments?
I have a couple of comments. Uh, number one, this was given to me by the, and I know there's not a lot of people left here in the audience, but for the people at home, uh there is going to be, the Park and Recreation is putting together a basketball camp June tenth through the eleventh at the YMCA, the Elston YMCA. And the first hundred and fifty slots are free and available for this camp. And that's for boys and girls ages nine through seventeen, from four PM to seven PM. That's June tenth through June eleventh for a free basketball camp, if you'd like to attend that. Uh, probably the most, one of the most important things for the folks that live on Wabash Street, going from Barkrab down to Tenth Street, is next Tuesday is they're going to start hauling the concrete subbases, floors, whatever you want to call them, pillars for the parking garage downtown. So Wabash Street from Barkrab down to Tenth Street is gonna be no parking. And I don't know if it's gonna be closed down to the uh public, but I know there's gonna be no parking on that street. And that's gonna last for, I don't know, five, six months? I don't know the exact timeframe, but yeah, that's gonna affect that neighborhood. So just wanted to let those folks know about that. The planning department's supposed to go out and pass out flyers to the doors to let the people know. Probably the most important thing that I'd like to talk about uh this evening is Memorial Day coming up, this coming Monday. And I think that we should look at Memorial Day instead of just having a day off, going to a cookout, planting flowers around the yard, uh or going on vacation somewhere or going to a party. I mean, if we really sit down and look at what the true meaning is of Memorial Day, we all know that it's to memorialize the folks, the veterans that died in uh battles uh for our freedom and for our right to uh vote. And that people should get out and support the city, support the veterans, uh whether they're passed away or or alive. To number one, fly your flag on Monday. If you don't have a flag, go buy a flag. Uh, I try to fly my flag almost every day. But I guarantee you, sitting up here and being a city representative that we should be leading the way, we should be leading the American way, that we should be flying the flag and making folks want to fly the flag also. They sell flags at Lowe's, Menards, Cableins. You can get them online, they're not that expensive. And we should just, we need to do that. Uh, number two, the Memorial Day Parade, there's always a Memorial Day Parade. And there's been a Memorial Day Parade in Michigan City for possibly fifty years, as far as I can remember. And it goes down to Caters Street. It starts at ten o'clock or nine-thirty from the squat post, down to Caters Street, ends up at Greenwood Cemetery. And the crowd, every year, gets smaller and smaller and smaller. And the folks put a lot of effort into this parade. You have the Boy Scouts, you have the Girl Scouts, you have the police, uh you have other service organizations, the American Legion, VFWs, DAVs, all these organizations are there. And we should support them and thank them for what they've done for the United States. And then after the parade, they go to Greenwood Cemetery, where at that time, at ten o'clock, at no, at ten-thirty, they have a presentation by uh the VFW and some other folks that are there. And the municipal band is there, putting on a presentation of American songs and things like that. I just want to encourage everybody in Michigan City to get out. So from nine-thirty in the morning, okay, till eleven o'clock in the morning, that's gonna take up an hour and a half of your day, hour and a half of your year to go and pay tribute to the people that we need to thank the most for our freedom and our right to vote and our right to sit up here and have a free society and a free government. So I just have to uh encourage everybody in town, encourage the council members and make this uh parade and make Memorial Day a special day. And especially, fly your flag, red, white and blue, right? America, everybody should have a flag and everybody should be proud of it, no matter what your feelings are, this way, that way, no, I don't like America, yeah, I like America. We all have different issues, you know? We all have a different perspective on things. But there's one thing, we all live in America and we all got the freedom here. So we should fly the flag. And with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Councilman Cora? Meeting is adjourned.